Check, 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 one, two, one, two. This is an audio visual test. Check, 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 one, check, 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 two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder for those at home, if you have any questions, you can email us at scinfo@pembrokek12.org. And then for those in the audience, if you want to chime in on the topic that we are sharing, feel free to do so. Again, we've, any, we do have an adjustment to the agenda?
Yes, under my report, I've added a consideration for approval for the PHS track meet in White Plains, New York. It's the Dartmouth relays that we've gone through several times in the past, but just based off of the timing of the meetings. We're not exactly sure how many students are going, but they are the second week of K, so.
Bill's schedule has been approved. With that, I will consider a motion for approval for the school committee meeting minutes of April 4th.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or additions or adaptations to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you. With that, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
So I am going to talk a little bit about kind of where we are with our budget and a little bit about the work that we did last Thursday at the budget subcommittee meeting in an effort to balance the FY '24 budget. So as you all know, we went through maintenance of effort in January. We've gone through a series of presentations from departments and from buildings. Last week, we presented the recommended budget, which included $46,000 of required additions. So that was one, special education paraprofessional, and an increase in the contracted services for the BCBA, LABA services for our students and IEPs. Those were the only two required additions. And then we moved forward one level one addition, which, level one priority, which was a continuation of programming. So adding a Titan Lab, Titan slash Compass paraprofessional at the middle school. So again, at the elementary school, the program for our students for dysregulation and to kind of, you know, home base is called Titan Lab, at the high school that's called Compass. So the name at the middle school was, I think, Titan Compass, or there's some kind of combo name. But to make sure for families that it's, it's clear that there is services for students pre-K through 12 that need a home base, that need a place to check in, that need a place just to kind of gather themselves before returning to, to work with their peers. So that was the only level one priority that we moved forward. We did share with you all of the other priorities that were shared over the course of those meetings, as well as some strategies that we had to still achieve some of those goals. We talked a little bit about some grant funding that we've gotten. We've talked a little bit about some opportunities with capital funding for things like that walkway at the middle school and whatnot. So, you know, still continuing to look at that. Last week, you guys so nicely raised fees for athletics and transportation to garner some additional revenue of about $37,000. So when we met on Thursday, what we were looking for from the budget sub perspective was to solve for the remaining budget gap, which was about $400,000. So there are a couple of items in the packet that I sent you on that spreadsheet to talk about as far as balancing the budget. Obviously, our intent is to stay away from class sizes, to stay away from programming, to stay away from options for students and families. So there's a couple of reductions that we would make in good fiscal times, based off enrollment. Obviously, in good fiscal years, we would reinvest those dollars into a program or a different program. This year, we would be using them to balance the budget. So there's, we need one less special education teacher across the district. So part of the conversation when we talked about that shift in enrollment for the additional para at the high school is a shift in the population moving through the middle school. So we're able to reduce our overall special education staffing by 1.0 FTE. That's a savings of $68,000. In addition, looking at some of the shifts in enrollment and the projected class sizes at the high school, we were able to reduce one teacher there. So again, in a great fiscal year, we would still be making that reduction, but we would be investing it somewhere else. So one less teacher at the high school. It's difficult to say exactly who or where that teacher would be at this point, because as we work through kind of, you know, there's non-professional status teachers and there's professional status teachers. But assuring you that the reduction of one teacher at the high school would still allow us to run reasonable class sizes across all disciplines, as well as to continue to offer the breadth of elective offerings that we have for students now. So there'd be no programmatic changes with that reduction. The third and final enrollment reduction that we identified was the .6 world languages position. That position is really split across the middle school and the high school. So as we look at where our language enrollments are in the district, obviously with fewer students, I mean, Donna shared her presentation, a few, few folks were taken aback by the number at the middle school being in the 300s for the first time in a long time. Our number at the high school for students next year is in the low 700. So obviously, with that flux in enrollment, there are some efficiencies that we can gain through certain electives and offerings like world language. So taking a look at the projected students at the middle school next year, we have decided that we could run one less section of Spanish at the middle school. So there'd be, I think, 10 sections of Spanish. Right now, there's 11, we can run up to 10 sections of Spanish. Taking a look at some of the high school language offerings, there's a couple of really low enrollment courses. I think when we look at some of our AP classes, we have, you know, I think, two students enrolled in AP French and three students enrolled in AP Latin. Obviously, we are committed to that pathway for students. Any student that has, you know, started Latin at the high school or French at the middle school, we want to make sure that there's the ability for them to get all the way through. But we are really at a crossroads in Pembroke on what we want to do with languages moving forward. So for next year, there are a couple of places where we can combine the honors course with the CP course, or, you know, we are looking at having the Lat, the three Latin students take the course online. Again, Latin is not a spoken language, so easily something delivered through an online platform, obviously with teacher monitoring as well. So we are really starting the conversation now, and I think, you know, what we discussed at Budget Sub on Thursday was this is a pretty big conversation that will probably take a few different ed sub meetings. was this is a pretty big conversation that will probably take a few different Ed sub meetings as we work through the fall, leading up to the program of studies on what are the languages that we want to offer at the high school? What is it that students and families are looking for? How do we keep a rich offering, right? So we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all learners. Not all of our students are going to be successful with a spoken language, so what else can we offer? You've heard us talk a little bit about American Sign Language. We've talked about, you know, can we start the feeder a little bit early? What does it look like to have a five, six enrichment language program and those pieces? But, you know, Spanish has been strong forever here in Pembroke, but Latin and French have really kind of ebbed and flowed over time. I think what we're seeing right now with our students at the high school is that both Latin and French are equally low. So usually, one is high and one is a little bit lower. So I do think we're at the place where we need to start to discuss, you know, are we just offering Latin one and two for students? Are we offering French one every other year? How can we get at still having a breadth of offerings, but really being efficient in our staffing? Because when you have sections that have seven or eight kids in them, you know, we've committed to the language, so we're running a section of a language with seven or eight students, and that's not the most effective way to run the schedule. So for next year, we have committed to all of the languages and running all of the sections that were published in the program of studies. But moving forward, we would start to look at what can we pare back? What makes more sense for our current population? Should we be going back to the conversation we had five years ago about the two-year language graduation requirement? What would that mean for our students? What would that mean for projected enrollments over the course of the next year? But for next year, we are able to reduce a .6 world language teacher over both buildings. It's not, it's one section at the middle school and two sections at the high school. We do have somebody that is already a fractional employee. Sometimes when we talk about reductions that are not full-time, we talk about what that means for staff. You don't want to lose a full, you don't want to lose a staff member that's full-time because you're making their position a fractional position. So we do have a staff member that is in a fractional position. You know, obviously, there's some certification pieces that we need to work through before we'd identify who the actual staff member is that is leaving the district. But there is a .6 language position already in our budget, so that would be what we'll reduce it. Those are kind of the people. So that's 2.6 less people next year than we have this year. There's no other department in town that is cutting people, but, you know, we would make these reductions in a good year. I just want to keep saying that, but we would reinvest them in something else. We would be talking about some of those other math positions that we talked about during the presentations or the director of counseling or something like that. But, you know, in this budget cycle, in order to balance, there would be straight reductions from the budget.
Aaron, we have a couple of retirements, or there's one retirement.
We have one retirement, yep.
Would one of these people be able to figure that retirement?
No, so the retirement's at the elementary level.
Okay.
It's a fifth grade ed, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to be clear, too, that these teachers, like the full-time high school and the specialized, they'd be going anyways just because there's just no need for them right now? Is that?
Right, so in any year, we would be offering them as an enrollment reduction, but we'd be reinvesting the dollars.
And when you say we'd be able to reinvest the dollars, right?
So let's say we were going to do one less English teacher at the high school. We'd be coming to you and saying, instead, now we're going to offer something else at the high school with that same funding.
Okay.
The rest of the conversation that we had at Budget Sub centered around one-time dollars and the strategy of balancing your budget with one-time funds. It is not an excellent strategy. Again, it really just is a one-year solve for a multi-year problem. So, you know, having had a couple of conversations both at the Select Board meeting, as well as, you know, department headwise and just one-on-one with the town manager, there is some sentiment in the town that the struggle that departments are facing this year fiscally is a function of the new growth number on the tax base and that number not being where they had projected it to be going into FY '24. Some of that being the property on the development on the country club, some of it being the development over by the funeral home. I think there was an understanding earlier in the cycle that they thought those projects would be further along than they are, and that has created a shortfall in the number that they were expecting for new growth going into FY '24. So if you are believing of that strategy, then you would be of the mindset that FY '24 is an anomaly. And as we get into FY '25, the fiscal picture would look better on the town side and their ability to contribute to our budget would be greater. If that is the sentiment, then there's really no reason why you shouldn't look at one-time funds to balance the budget. We have used one-time funds before. The first item that I have listed there is a portion of the first quarter Circuit Breaker payment. We have used this strategy in the past. So for anybody not familiar with Circuit Breaker, Circuit Breaker is the special education reimbursement system through the state. So they set a threshold for special education tuition. Anything you spend as a district above that for a student is reimbursed at a rate set by the state. This year's rate is 75%. They have committed to 75% for next year, though the formula when fully funded would be 100% reimbursement. Two years ago, they added transportation to the formula. This year, transportation was reimbursed at 25%. Next year, it will be reimbursed at 50%. So what that means for us is that we're expecting in FY '24 to receive about $280,000 more in Circuit Breaker dollars than we've received in the past. That's why I'm comfortable saying we could use $150,000 of that first quarter payment to pay down the deficit of the budget. I would never advocate for using the entire first quarter payment. You kind of never know where kids are going to fall over the summer. Somebody could move in, somebody could move out. You just want to make sure that you're not spending all of it. We've used this strategy, I think four years ago we used it. We didn't actually end up needing to take the Circuit Breaker payment that quarter because we had some movement between tuitions and between placements over the course of the year. So $150,000 on $3 million budget line item is not unimaginable to make up over the course of the year, depending on placements and movement. So it is a good placeholder to have in there. If we need to close next year and we're still short, we can definitely take it from the Circuit Breaker. The other piece is rental revenue. So we have been renting classrooms in our district, so North River Collaborative, for the first year, I think it started in COVID, 2019, 2019, 2020, we rented two classrooms to the North River Collaborative at Habermock. So they rented there for two years. And this past year, they moved over to Bryantville and are renting four classrooms. So they pay about $15,000 per classroom in rental. That money has been deposited in our building utilization account, and in the past, we've used that for HVAC repairs, for some building upgrades. You know, they are looking again to rent for additional, for more classrooms at Bryantville and looking for a fifth. So I think for the FY '24, I'm comfortable saying there's a healthy enough balance in the building utilization fund to use those rental dollars to offset for this year only. So $60,000 would be the rent for FY '24 for North River. Bryantville would go towards reducing the budget. Those reductions total $386,800, which leaves us solving for $13,000, which is a manageable plug in a $37 million budget. So I'm happy to figure that out over the course of the year. It just means, you know, three less boxes of tissues or copy paper, definitely manageable over the course of the year, so.
Aaron, can I put on my Mike Troppiano hat for a second?
It's a big hat, so.
It's a big hat, but I got a big head. I can recall him in different instances, and I'm thinking kind of along those same lines. We're looking to do this one time with the assumption that these are anomalies and that we won't be in this situation the next year. And I can hear Mike's voice as he would say, if it's not an anomaly, then we're solving for this in a, twice next year. For the next budget cycle.
So you're just kicking the can down the road, is what I would say, right?
Right. So how confident are we that, you sound very confident that you've already done the deep dive.
I'm confident in what we're doing here. I am not an expert in new growth or what the assessors do or how that formula works. I wouldn't recommend using the funds if I didn't think we could weather it over the course of FY '24 and even to FY '25. So what we're seeing from the state level is they are throwing lots of dollars at districts right now, between now and June 30th, which means there's some kind of excess of SOR funding or CARES funding out there that they're trying to get out of their coffers and into ours. It's really hard to take that money right now with the parameters that they have put on it as far as requirements for matching and spending. That money will need to go somewhere. I think it'll probably find its, you know, a new mechanism to get to districts over the course of the next 12 to 18 months. Right now, it isn't a feasible place for us, even though we've applied for everything and we keep, you know, if there's an application, we apply and we generally get some sort of funding. We're really trying to figure out how to meet their timelines and their deadlines now. But there seems to be an excess of dollars at the state level. There was a conversation about the millionaire's tax and that money going directly back into education. We obviously didn't see the benefit of that in Pembroke for this round. I don't know where that stands for subsequent budget or fiscal years. There was a conversation about local aid, again, not our side of the budget, but the town side of the budget. Pembroke saw a reduction in local aid for the first time in several years here. I know there's been conversations at the Select Board level and at the state level. And, you know, there's many like districts in Pembroke that are seeing that and how they make up for that in upcoming fiscal years.
So follow up to that question, then. Recognizing you work and at times collaborate with the other superintendents, what is the pulse of the group in general on this type of funding? And do we see any, is there any inkling that the stipulations around this money that they're throwing out that seems to be difficult to hit the timeframes or the requirements? Any loosening in that, recognizing maybe other districts are struggling in the same way?
I haven't seen much in that sense. What we did see was, you'll remember, we talked a lot about the 14% OSD increase. You know, that was such an uncharacteristic number for that increase. It generally hovers around 2%. They did come out in the Governor's Supplemental Budget with a relief, an extraordinary relief piece to that. Very few districts met the threshold for the relief. Again, I think I tried to explain the formula to you. You have to spend 125% of what you spent the year before. Anything above that is reimbursed, what, 40%? Less than a third of the districts in Massachusetts are eligible under that formula. So they are relooking at the formula now. There's been a couple of suggestions around phasing in the percentage increase, 4%, 5%, 5% to get to the 15. There's a conversation about fully funding Circuit Breaker at 100% to make up for that shortfall. I do expect there to be some kind of movement on that between now and July 1st, which would even negate our need to look at this one-time funding.
Okay. I guess, all of a sudden, I'm clicking to my spreadsheets and I'm like, you know, as we tracked mandates that were unfunded or underfunded, can we, are we in a position where we can kind of start tracking some of these, for lack of a better term, but kind of hits that, or hurdles? Just so that, again, I'm just trying to give our state reps and our state senator data to help them, to support them, to support us, if that makes any sense. So if we're able to give an inventory of these types of things and the struggles that maybe came along with them, I think it helps them argue on our behalf. I, because, you know, I think their folks want us to argue with them, but I don't, you know, there are reps. So I don't want to argue with them, I want to give them what they need to argue for us. So if we can do that, that would be great.
Well, I think, too, Sue, as we look at the, these one-time funds, as Aaron shared, I think we're confident that because of the increase in the transportation next year, we'll be able to bring some of that extra back to cover that, as well as hopefully, as Aaron shared, we may not have to tap into that. And then from the rental side, I think, and these are one-time funds that, like you said, won't necessarily catch us down the road.
Down the road. And sometimes, I guess, for those that may be new to the process and those that are considering maybe doing this role, sometimes we have this dialogue just to help the public hear the thought process that's going on behind the scenes and the conversations, that, and the information that's coming in. And for me, sometimes I need to hear it a few times so that it kind of clicks. So thanks for indulging me again, but it helps me to kind of walk through, and I think it gives the folks that.
I feel like if we, there's room for us to go up from there.
Okay.
And I have had conversations with, you know, just even today, I spoke with John Brown, and I feel like, you know, there's some positive momentum to try to bring the schools back up to a level where we should be. Because we can't, we can't go on Maintenance of Effort budget.
Forever.
Unless, every year. This has been going on for a long time, and we can't, we're at a point, we're what, 20 years as a district now, right? And now it's time, we, you know, we've walked the eggshells for a long time to do this sort of skeleton budget, but it's time that we have to, like, start reinvesting in the schools, in my opinion, so.
And I think that, you know, we've got, you know, we're dealing with a birth rate that's down, so that's part of our enrollment issue. We're dealing with an inventory on housing as an issue. But some of those things are going to flip. They just do. They're cyclical like anything else. But also making our schools competitive and, like you said, stepping away from just trying to stay status quo and grow what we offer will entice people to come in, and then that's going to help solve those other two. Well, it's not going to solve, you know, birth rates, we'll stay out of that, but, [laughing], but as far as, you know, revenues and things like that. So I appreciate the conversations that you're having with them as well, so thank you.
Along the lines of what Sue said, you know, you guys met with the Select Board. I think we need to have, I think, my understanding is that we sort of operate on our own a little bit. Maybe we need to have clearer lines of communication with them and collaborate more with them.
Absolutely.
And then I, along those lines, I'm thinking, what if we talked to them about, you know, they set the town budget, and what if we had kind of a floor for what is allotted to the schools so that we're not going down to 49% again and we're not sitting here every year trying to figure out how to solve for $400,000?
Well, that's exactly why we're trying to have the conversation before. Like, this year, we didn't have a conversation till, like, what, the end of February, March? March, I think. So my point to the Select Board was, is we should really have that conversation back in October, November. Just start, even just a high-level conversation. Maybe we even have like a joint meeting. So you all had a joint Budget Sub at one point? Where there was two members from the Budget Sub, the school committee. Those two members met with two identified members of the Select Board as their Budget Sub. Those, they met quarterly. There's not enough really to meet every month on that topic.
Makes sense.
But I do think there was, there was some good conversation there, and it was an opportunity for at least two members of the Select Board to know our budget in and out a little bit more. Because not, maybe budget is something that I like, but it's not something that everybody likes. But if there's at least two people on your board that have a really good working knowledge of the budget, I think that's helpful for us, for two people on the Select Board to be, you know, really familiar with it.
Yeah, and I think they liked having that. And I just, I just think when, when all of the things that came in with COVID happened, that's how we maybe wandered a little bit away from that. But we're at a point now where I think everybody wants to do that Select Board and us, so.
Maybe it makes sense to revive that.
Yep.
What would the feasibility be, though? And maybe, I'm always trying to brainstorm and think outside the box of just having a Select Board or trying to win them over and just say, okay, each year when you determine the budget, the school is a minimum 54% or 53.2% or whatever. And just to guarantee that, so we at least have a pretty good idea of what we have going in. And then, you know, and just so that we're not, like I said, sitting here trying to solve for $400,000.
Right, I think some of the challenges that come with that strategy is that there are shared services that we use here in the schools that are budgeted on the town side. So if you take a look at our share of the health insurance or our share of the pension liability on the town side, you would need to include that in the percentage that you were seeking for the base for the schools. I also worry about what happens if we decide on 55% and 55%.
And it's not enough.
Right.
Well, what I was, I was saying, maybe it's like a floor, you know what I mean? It's sort of what I was saying, we all have a minimum, but of course, when you set a minimum, that's usually the target, but.
But I think it's definitely something to talk about together and see if.
Yep.
A joint meeting would be. I'll reach out and see if they're interested in designating two units for that.
Thank you.
David Dutz?
No, I'm just thinking, it, I was something I bet on the jockey, not the horse. I think Aaron's been a fantastic jockey for the six years I've been on the committee. I've sat with Mike Troppiano and the Patrick Hillcotts and the past crew. And every now and then, it looks a little hairy and scary in the math, but, you know, you get people that are experts in their field and you know we're going to pull this off. But I also understand there's a perception out there, you know, you're talking about 55%. I always joked, you know, I see this group of guys at the coffee shop every morning, and the first thing I hear is, now, 52% of the town budget goes to you people, you know, what are you doing? And I'm like, okay, now you sit down over a cup of coffee and try to explain to people, we're, you know, 49%, 52%, 55%, so.
But 100% of your property value is tied to the school.
Yeah. Well, you know, Pembroke has a limited, you know, commercial tax base. You know, basically, you have more Pembroke, I mean, that's the extent. We don't have a lot of open space that's buildable right now. It's, I don't say we're landlocked, but we do have to think a little bit outside the box. Sue, I definitely agree, you know, we're 20 years in. I guess a joke, but you should be able to stand on your own two feet. But every now and then, you might need a cane or a crutch to take a couple of steps. So just my thoughts on that, so.
Well, and then go on top of that, too, is if it's 20 years, then we invested probably in facilities and a lot for us to start, and now those are all cycling through, right? So we're now seeing that rotation. And buildings are about 20 years these days when it comes to whether it's major repairs or things like that. I think as we, and I commend Aaron and the team. I think the solutions that we've, that have been presented make sense, and it puts us in a position to be able to balance the budget this year. But I think we continue to talk about bigger picture, right? And I think that's going to be our challenge moving forward, that, as you said, it's more than a Maintenance of Effort. We can't just continue to do that, we're going to lose. We're going to lose good staff, we're going to lose good teachers because we're in an environment where they feel like we're heading backwards instead of forwards, right? And especially in education of all fields, you want to always be moving forward. You always, always want to be learning, you always want to, want to be improving and making that next step. So I think that's the challenge we have as a committee is how do we continue to provide or help look at what are solutions for this challenge that we have moving forward? And working with the Select Board and working with town leadership to say, what are the solutions? As Erin shared and, and my dialogues with town leadership, it's, they're more confident about next year with some of the tax bases increasing and, and some opportunities for more financial support there. But again, that's not the be-all, end-all. There's always going to be needs for more, so it's continue to advocate at the state level, continuing to, to look at. And our team does an amazing job of looking at grants and what other funds we can get out there to continue to improve that. But I think we need to continue to challenge the, the community. If you want this solid education provided for your family, for your, your children, we've got to continue to push, to push things rather than just being content with this. Because yeah, two more years of this and, and we're, we're well behind. We can't continue to do that. And I think that's, that's a challenge for all of us to see how we're going to solution. And, and this isn't even addressing our challenges with VOTEC, right? And, and where we need to be with that challenge. So this is just maintaining the programs we're trying to hold on to, let alone expand where we need to be. So I, I think we need to continue to push and see what resources are going to be there. Obviously, that's going to be the next large conversation in our community is, is where does VOTEC go? And that comes up, as that comes up at town meeting. And hopefully, that dialogue continues and moves forward there. But that will have its own financial challenges and we'll have to continue to try to meet that where that's at. But that's, that's something we're going to continue to move forward as well. So Erin, thank you for getting us to that place and team. And we'll look forward to meeting with the Select Board next week and the advisory board as well to share our plan and.
And then our public budget hearing would be the first we would make. And that's when you would vote on the budget that we're moving forward.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The next thing in your report is a consideration for a second read and approval of the PCMS Program of Studies. I'm not sure what that is. I just resent you the summary as well as the full document. I also, as part of your packet, shared with you the response in regards to the question that Sue had last week around Shakespeare and A Midsummer Night's Dream and that the intent was not to remove Shakespeare from, from the curriculum materials, but to find a play that fit a little bit better in the eighth grade, whether it was Tempest or any other option.
Romeo and Juliet.
Romeo and Juliet.
Comedy of errors, yeah.
Comedy of errors, yes. So again, they are going to be using those, those two with eighth graders next year to see what the better fit is. And then that would be fine to turn to the program of studies next year.
And it sounded like moving Midsummer Night's Dream up to the high school level.
Yes.
Where they felt it more appropriate, yeah.
You're just finding kids struggling with it right now and they want kids to enjoy Shakespeare, especially in the middle school. Not find it such a slog that they're done with it.
Sure, sure.
That makes sense. And thank you for that, Erin. My eighth grader's struggling with A Midsummer Night's Dream. So was his daughter.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I will consider a motion to approve the second read of the PCMS Program of Studies.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last thing in my report is that adjustment to the agenda, which is the track and field trip to the Dartmouth Relays. Again, we've gone there several times in the past. We haven't gone the past couple of years, but there's quite a talented group of athletes at Pembroke High School right now in track and fields. And we are anticipating about fifteen students qualifying for that meet. It is an out-of-state and overnight field trip. The itinerary is included in the back of your packet. They'd be leaving the high school around eleven o'clock on Friday, May twelfth. The relays start that evening, go through, go during the day Saturday and then coming back Saturday evening, night to Pembroke High School.
So one night away.
It is just one night away. Again, this is in front of you today because we are hoping that students will like to go. We're not sure exactly how many students will end up going, but because of the timing on it, we wanted to make sure that the trip was approved before we even let kids decide whether they were going or not. We have a lot of talented runners in our school, sure.
So with that, do we have a motion to approve the PHS Track Meet in White Plains, New York?
So.
A motion by David, second by Suzie. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it.
Just wanted to give you an update on the meeting that we had last Thursday for VOTEC as well. So we had a, wasn't around till it was already square. Just an opportunity for parents and community members to come out and ask questions in regards to the Warren article. The Warren article is pretty benign in the sense that it's just about the approval to form a regional planning committee, non-binding, no cost associated with it, but just to explore what membership and social VOTEC would entail. I think there were definitely many interested folks in the audience, obviously interested in VOTEC options for students. Wanted to talk a little about, about the process, the timeline. I think there were some great questions. I think they gave us some, some good feedback on, you know, what it looks like when they're contacting state reps versus when we're contacting state reps and really making sure that everybody is advocating on behalf of what's in the best interest of students at Pembroke. And, you know, sometimes it is the squeaky wheel. It gets the grease in making sure that we're, you know, continuing to think about that. But I do think overall, it was a positive evening for folks. I think there was a lot of information shared and I think it was definitely beneficial. You know, there was the, the one question that came up that we did talk about when we first put on the Warren article is if the Warren article doesn't pass at town meeting, what would the next steps be? You all could still move it forward. You know, I think we, that night, we agreed putting it on the town meeting. Warren gave us kind of a litmus test of where the town was at in regards to vocational education. I still believe that that's true. I think, you know, what the interest and intent of town meeting are now versus where they were when we started talking about it a few months, weeks ago are a little different. You know, I think the public safety proposal might bring a different group of folks to the town meeting. So I want to make sure that folks hear us when we say that parents should be coming, interested community members, I want options for kids should be coming. You know, town meeting is, is your place to have a vote in that. And I just want to make sure that folks know that we still need you to come. As much of a no-brainer as the committee is when we talked about it, there's obviously non-binding, no fiscal impact. It's still important that folks come out and vote if they're interested in exploring that option for students, so.
I wanted to thank Erin and Mary Beth and Jess for, for being at that as well and answering all the questions. I thought it was really great that you guys did that. And I think it was really good for the parents to, to be able to talk and, and have some of their questions answered.
People that had reached out individually, like with specific questions about their kid. So I think it was their opportunity to make a connection, right? Because I didn't necessarily know everybody in that audience. I've definitely met many of them before, but there were a couple of new faces there, so I think it was an opportunity for them to make a connection.
I'll figure it out.
There was about twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty, yeah.
I was going to say around thirty, yeah.
That's interesting.
I don't know. Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, that's great.
But it was good.
It was a good meeting.
With that being said, next time we will gather is May second.
So do you want to talk a little bit about May meeting dates?
Yep.
Got to be fun.
Let's do that.
So on May second, you were, Mike, just so that you're aware, the agendas will look funny because they're, each is separate meeting. So you'll have a public budget meeting, you'll have a school choo, choice hearing, and then you'll have the regular school community meeting. They all have it in succession on that night.
Fun stuff.
Yeah. After that, I'm assuming you all will want to open a meeting on May ninth because we do have an item on the warrant that you may all want to discuss as a body that evening. So I would, since you just, the town meeting's at seven, right? Seven-thirty? That's seven-thirty?
We usually meet at the high school.
We usually meet at six, six-thirty, right?
We'll meet prior to the meeting.
So like five o'clock?
Well, whatever time, I think town meeting starts at seven-thirty. If it's seven-thirty, I'll post for six-thirty.
Last time we did six-thirty, yeah.
So that's, I can, I post for that. And then your next meeting after that would be following the election and you would re-organize.
Reorganize.
Selfishly, I'm not able to meet on May sixteenth, so I'm hoping you guys are open to meeting on the, the May twenty-third for that. If not, you can meet on May sixteenth. Mary Beth would love to handle that, that's.
Are we good with those dates?
Everyone's scrolling through their calendar.
Yep, because we, we are not meeting on April twenty-fifth. I've moved that to the second of May. And then we've scheduled for the ninth, which is also town meeting. We'd meet prior, correct? And then the next would be the twenty-third.
Skip the sixteenth, meet on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah, that works for me. Twenty-third is fine with me. Everybody else?
Yep, so far open.
Yeah, they should all work for me.
And then somebody, I don't know who, but somebody will become the new secretary. Somebody will be the new secretary, whomever is the chair.
Congratulations, Mike.
Whomever ends up being the chair that evening, please know that the diplomas are already ready for signature. So it'll be a fast turnaround time for you to get the, I'll bring them on the twenty-third and start signing.
I have to say though, that Sue was a really, really good secretary.
She's excellent. I agree. Nice try.
All right.
Serve my time.
Town meeting's at seven.
Town meeting is at seven.
Seven, so I'll post for six.
Six, okay.
Yep, sounds good. So with this, with those dates set, I will listen for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a motion.
And seconded.
Sue, second by Suzie, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Everybody have a great evening, enjoy the beautiful weather.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.